Evan.
Sorry, Jim.
It's okay. No, that's fine. Did you get my voicemail yesterday?
No.
There was something in the other staff report, I think number eight, referenced a meeting for 2022.
Eight. Yep, July 7th, 2022. Smith Plan is going into town this year. Should he have any comments, these will be discussed at the meeting on July 7th, 2022. I have no idea how that date got him.
He's already reviewed it and I don't know if you talked to him, but I've gone back and forth with him already.
Um, I actually got his comments in an email and I sent it out with the staff report, I think. It was just him saying he didn't have any issues.
Evan, this is Chuck. Can you hear?
Can. Uh, no Fred Russo today, so I can read the public hearing.
Okay.
Notice.
Okay, no Fred. Uh, how about Massimo or Sharon? See them.
No word from either of them. Uh, let me give them a quick call. No Massimo and Sharon will be joining us in a few minutes.
Did, uh, Evan, did Sharon ask for us to wait to start?
No, we can start.
Um, okay. Uh, okay, then, um, I assume, let me just check, Harry's here. I see, uh, Joe Chadwick, Joe, uh, make sure people are actually here. Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Okay, Marcy, are you here?
Marcy's here.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, uh, um, we'll call this meeting, are we recording this? Uh, shall I? Okay, we'll call this meeting the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission Order. It is Thursday, January 16th, 2025. It is a little after 7:00 PM. Um, we'll start by introducing members of the commission and staff. Uh, Commission Member Joe Chadwick, Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is still present.
Joe Vaiuzo, Joe, are you here?
Joe Vaiuzo is present.
Thank you, Joe. Marcy, Marcy Pelusi, are you here?
Marcy's here.
Sharon Hutner, Sharon, you're here?
Oh, sorry, Sharon. There you go.
I'm here. Sorry about being late.
I accidentally muted Chuck, by the way. Chuck needs to unmute himself.
Okay. Um, and also introducing our staff are, um, uh, our interim town planner is Evan Brying. Evan, are you here?
Here.
And our, uh, retired but stepping in, uh, making appearances tonight is our, uh, is Harry Smith. Harry, you're here?
I am here.
And our clerk recording secretary, Michelle Martin, is lurking in the background. And I am Chuck Anders, Chair. Uh, Evan, do you want to read the notice of public hearing in Fred's absence?
Uh, sure. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, January 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM by remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's, uh, meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. One, application 24-12.1, zoning regulation amendments, planning and zoning commission, see Andre, Chair, applicant. Application 24, or number two, application 24-11.4, special exception for, uh, grading and, for grading located at 5 Pin Oak Drive, 5 Pin Oak Drive LLC, CFO David De Mayo, applicant and owner. Number three, application 24-12.3, special exception for general or business office located at 5 Pin Oak Drive, 5 Pin Oak Drive LLC, CFO David De Mayo, applicant and owner. Number four, application 24-11.5, special exception for grading located at 257 and 261 East Main Street, 261 East Main Street LLC, CFO Mark, Mark Jackson, applicant and owner. Number five, application 24-12.4, special exception modification for general use, general office use located at 257 and 261 East Main Street, 261 East Main LLC, CFO Mark Jackson, applicant and owner. Number six, application number 24-12.5, special exception for grading located at 22 School Street, Stephen Rosenthal and Mary McCormick, applicants and owner. At set hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, 1019 Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, 06405. Written communications may be sent to the above address or to planningandzoning@branfordct.gov.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Uh, we'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant can go first, make its presentation. After the applicant, uh, gets done with its presentation, we turn it over to the commission and staff, typically starting with a summary of a staff report, uh, from Evan, and then open it up to questions and comments from the commissions. At that point, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, Evan's going to explain to you in a minute how to participate as a member of the public. You make, uh, the question, please identify yourself with the record, make your, uh, questions, uh, comments. And, uh, after the public portion, we allow the applicant to respond to the public, uh, comments. And we may have, uh, further questions and comments from commission members and staff. We may or may not close public hearing depending on how things go. Uh, so with that, Evan, can you just explain, uh, the process for participating in the public hearing? When we get to that part for the public or applicants?
Sure, if you'd like to participate down to the bottom of your screen, there's a raise hand button. Uh, you can indicate to us that you'd like to speak using that or type into the chat. Uh, you can also, um, just wave your hand in front of your camera. I'll try to catch you. Uh, if you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to participate or raise your hand. Uh, and please, uh, state your name at the beginning of your comment or question.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. So we're going to follow the, the format, the, the items as listed on our public hearing. Item number one is actually a public hearing, M&amp;V LLC, Mark Andrew Usee, applicant, Mary Keegan, trustee owner. This is 72 Hilltop Drive, in 43 Toteket Road. It's a three lot subdivision. However, we have a public hearing scheduled that at our next meeting, which is February 6th. So we're not opening this public hearing tonight. I know it's listed on the agenda as a public hearing item, but it's actually coming up next time. That would then bring us into item number two, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission, some zoning regulation amendments. Um, the quick preview on this one is that I understand that we're going to open and continue this. And Harry, you want to, uh, uh, just give a further summary about what we're doing with this?
Sure, uh, Harry Smith, um, I don't want my status, I guess I'm consulting planner. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know that in preparing for the meeting, I became aware that at least a couple items, um, that were discussed back, you may recall, and this has taken so long for me to put together, and I apologize, but, back we had the last extended discussion on the packet in, uh, May, which was the May 2nd meeting. Um, a couple of the items that were discussed then that we had, um, gone through that were in the minutes, um, didn't show up in the draft, base draft that I started working from, because you may recall, um, there were some, a couple of things that were taken out of the draft I prepared for the May meeting. Um, some things that, uh, the commission wanted altered, uh, a little more research on a couple of items. Um, and I had put up a couple of things that weren't in the draft and, um, but I had them typed into the minutes of the May 2nd meeting. So I, when I started preparing for this in October and then more extensively December, just assumed they were in the draft and did not check them out. I just worked on the changes I needed to make. So I am frankly wondering if I lost the version of the changes somewhere, but, I think it would be best if I went and double checked everything, reviewed the actual recording of the meeting. Um, and we did this before proceeding with the application, so, um, you know, what we've got in the document that was filed with the town clerk that you got is what is before the commission. Whether we can add any of the missing changes back into it, at the point where the commission votes on this, assuming you want to vote to approve, uh, some or all of them, um, we can figure out between now and, uh, the next meeting on February 6th. So as Chuck mentioned, just suggests that the public hearing be continued to February 6th. And if there's anybody in the public here, I suppose, you know, can't come, we can deal with that. Somebody wants to make a comment, but, I'll just leave it there.
Chuck Anderson, yeah, this is sort of just by what I'm back on, this is probably about, I don't know, 10 to 15 sort of miscellaneous revisions of sections of regulations, some cleanup items, some items that in our experience of actually applying the regulations, we noticed that, hey, wait a minute, that's, that isn't the way that, uh, we, we think it should be applied and we either want to text it, uh, change the text so that it's, um, you know, in the way that we've been applying it, or in fact, we want to change it because we've noticed in the application that it's, it's presented issue. So that's what this is. It's not anything, it's not wholly radical or new. I think it's, it's more in the cleanup category. Um, is, is, I will ask, is there any member of the public, again, we're going to continue this to our next meeting on February 6th, but if anyone came here this evening, can't make it on the 6th, does anyone want to speak about that? Evan, do you see anyone?
I do not see any.
Okay, so for our, this item number two, our zoning regulation amendments, we will continue this to our next meeting, which will be on Thursday, February 6th, again, also by remote, just like this one is. Anything else, Harry or Evan?
No, I guess for me it's see you then, because I don't need to stay the entire meeting this time, so. All right, have a good, quick night. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks, Harry. Okay, then let's go on to items number, uh, three or four. Those are, uh, the same address, same project. It's 5 Pin Oak Drive LLC, care of David De Mayo, applicant and owner. It's a special exception for grading and a special exception for general and business office. Is the applicant ready to proceed with that?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mission, uh, Jim Preddy, Criscolo Engineering, 420 East Main Street in Branford, um, representing owners of 5 Pin Oak LLC. Uh, this is one of the last undeveloped lots in what was known as Woodlands on 95. Um, industrial subdivision that I'm sure most of you are familiar with, um, kind of starts at Rings End, past Rings End and goes all the way over to Sycamore, um, where Sycamore connects to Route 1. Uh, let me just go right to the screen. So, okay, here's, so this is the existing conditions plan. Again, there's a corner of Pin Oak and Sycamore Way. This is the end of Sycamore Way. Um, there's a pump station in the corner here, uh, sewer, sanitary sewer pump station. And then this right of way is one of the access, um, right aways to the bittersweet and Eltera Holdings property back here that, um, I think have been in and out of here over the years. Uh, it's mostly, uh, wooded slope site. Uh, we did go through and, um, walked through quite a bit of briars in here and did a tree inventory of what was greater than 12 inches. Um, although I did, I did take some photos I could show you later. There's a lot of actually broken trees in here. I, I don't know if this was one of the areas that were hit during that, one of those micro bursts a couple of years ago, but quite a few, um, broken off trees in here. Uh, what they're looking to do is, um, pretty standard, um, for this neighborhood, um, a 20,000 square foot, uh, metal building subdivided to be able to, uh, rent or lease out to different people. Uh, electrician, a plumber, a, a lawn care guy that needs to store stuff somewhere. We're not proposing any outdoor storage. These are just, again, these are basically flex units. Um, we do have a grading plan with detention basin at the bottom of the hill. There is wetlands just off the property here, kind of sneaks on a little bit. Uh, we did go to wetlands and get approval from them. Uh, the town engineer has also reviewed the detention basin and, uh, and, uh, the outlet, you know, the drainage and the outlet works and, and he's okay with it. We have, uh, there's erosion control plan, typical silt fence, some diversion swells, swales to get into the basin area. This will be used as a sediment trap uh, while this hill is getting regraded. Um, stockpile area way up in the corner here, just stay away from this downhill slope and the wetlands. Uh, let's see what else. Typical details and erosion control notes. I'm going fast, so if anybody wants to go back. Um, landscape plan, we are showing street trees with some plantings in between all along, along this corner here. I do have, um, building plantings along the street side of, uh, Sycamore and, uh, in the front of the building where the doors are, uh, in between the doors. Uh, we do have a sidewalk, uh, in the, this side of the building, because there are some exit doors, you know, needed for egress requirements at the back. Um, we, uh, during part of the wetland application, they asked us to, um, uh, revegetate this slope with some trees that will get large. Um, so we did add those in after that, um, meeting. Uh, and we're also showing some like evergreen type trees, um, uh, I think they're fir, along the property line to provide some screening, um, which, uh, you guys had approved the, um, plan over here as similar. So I think that between the two of them, they'll fill in that border quite nicely. Um, we do have some building plans. Uh, again, this, these are flex space, so, uh, basically empty spaces with some small office space in it and, you know, um, typical metal building. So if, unless there's any questions, I will let Evan to it.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Evan, do you want to summarize your, uh, staff report?
Uh, sure, like Mr. Preddy said, this is a, uh, four unit, uh, structure being built, um, some grading within 100 feet of a protected wetland, um, and, uh, a 37 space parking lot, uh, for 5,000 square foot units. Um, the use, uh, we categorized as general or business office. That's what we've, uh, categorized similar uh, uses in the past or similar projects in the past. Uh, they satisfy the bulk requirements of the IG2 district. Um, the landscaping plan requirements, uh, section 63D3, uh, unless waived by the commission due to minimal impact of a proposed activity, a landscape architect licensed in the state of Connecticut shall prepare the plans. Uh, this was not prepared by a landscape architect. Uh, so I have two determinations on here for the commission to make. Uh, staff would like the commission to determine if they would waive this landscape architect requirement. Um, the front yard landscaping requirement is partially satisfied by a 12 and a half foot wide landscaping bed, uh, where a 25 foot wide bed is required. Uh, the side and rear, uh, landscaping requirements require a five foot wide bed. Um, there is existing vegetation on the one side of the property and they're proposing some, um, uh, trees to be planted along the other side. Um, they satisfy the planting bed requirements around the building. And section 63L, uh, the commission may modify certain specific requirements when warranted by excellence in landscape design. This is my second commission determination. Staff would like the commission to determine whether, uh, they would be willing to waive full compliance with the front yard, uh, landscaping requirements. Um, the, uh, required parking, uh, for this, um, um, this general or business office use. Based on past applications, uh, parking requirements were calculated by applying the general or business office parking requirement of 250 square, or one space per 250 square feet, uh, for the areas, uh, used as a conventional office. And the application of the warehouse or wholesale business requirement of set one space per 750 square feet, uh, for the remainder of the areas, uh, to be used for the storage of equipment or vehicles. Um, each of these units has a 500 square foot, um, office area uh, with the remainder of a 4,500 square foot, um, storage area. Uh, that breaks down to about eight spaces for each unit, total requirement of 32 spaces. Uh, the applicant is proposing 37 spaces. Uh, the applicant did submit a lighting plan and they satisfied the criteria from section 6.7. Um, they did provide an erosion and sediment control plan. They satisfied the three to one earth slope requirements. Um, the, uh, applications, uh, drainage and stormwater control system was uh, previously reviewed by the town engineer as part of the inland wetland commission approval. Uh, they did not have any issues. Um, the applicant received approval from the inland wetland commission on October 24th. And based on the application materials, it appears that the special exception criteria are generally satisfied. Staff recommends the following findings. One, that the commission finds that the proposed use is consistent with the special exception criteria. Uh, two, subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, the commission finds that the applicant has demonstrated excellence in landscape design per section 63L2. Uh, condition one, uh, is pertaining to the parking requirements. Um, I just figured that if somebody were to move into one of these units, which doesn't seem like the applicant, um, is looking to market to a traditional office, uh, space to be used there. So if somebody were to move a business, uh, that would expand that office area, um, that would increase that parking requirement. Uh, so I wrote this condition. Uh, this approval exclusively applies to the general or business office use as reflected, uh, on sheet A1 titled proposed floor plan. Any expansion of the 500 square foot office area shown on that plan in each unit shall require additional approvals from the planning and zoning commission. Uh, condition two, prior to the start of construction, erosion control measures shall be installed. Condition three, any additional measures, uh, deemed necessary by the zoning enforcement officer shall be installed. Uh, and any lighting has to be compliant with section 6.7.
Chuck Anderson, Chair, uh, thank you, Evan. Mr. Fred, just questions. I know, um, you, you have some, uh, landscaping that are shown on plan. And, uh, I think you used to typically have, uh, I think Larry Appleton file, uh, at least a lot of, uh, plans. Is, is there, can you address, um, I guess the, the two issues we're being asked to find? One is the, the, the need for a landscape, uh, professional landscape, uh, architect license in the state to prepare, provide a landscaping plan, which, which, uh, looks like you haven't done. And also the issue of excellence in landscape design. Want to give you a chance to address those issues for us.
Sure, I, I'll put it back up on the screen. Okay, so, uh, a couple of, um, things, uh, I've been, I've been doing, um, these landscape plans for Larry Appleton. We've been, we've been assembling, you know, he would do the design and we would assemble them for probably 20 years. Um, uh, so I, I, I kind of, I kind of have been, so by a roundabout way, I've been doing these for 20 years, you know, um, uh, we did use native tree plantings. We are using, um, a, um, uh, conservation mix on this slope here that'll only get mowed once a year. Um, so that'll kind of get this all revegetated. We are, this will be lawn here. Uh, the, the, the narrow, uh, or the not having a 25 foot strip is, uh, along the edge of the property line here for the first 10 feet, under 12 feet is a, uh, uh, utility is meant for, all the power in this neighborhood is underground, so we, we can't really plant anything in there. So that'll be lawn. It'll end up being a snowshell for the town in the winter, but, um, uh, we can't, we couldn't plant in that 10 foot strip regardless. Um, given what this is, uh, you know, I, I did use native plantings, but we tried to keep it relatively low maintenance because there will be rental units and, um, the reality of it is, you know, low maintenance stuff gets maintained better than stuff that requires high maintenance. Um, as far as, uh, you know, excellence in landscaping, again, we mimicked what was going on, what had been approved next door. Um, uh, as far as building plantings and, and, uh, street trees, uh, so uh, I, I think, given that this is an industrial subdivision, you know, in the back of the industrial subdivision and not, you know, on, on Main Street. Um, I think, you know, um, I'm not a landscape architect, but I am a professional engineer in landscaping. And again, I've been doing this quite a while, so hopefully this suffices for this.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Ms. Preddy. Uh, other questions, comments, commission members, Marcy?
Yeah, I'm, I can't really see, um, I have a, a sense of where you're doing the shade trees, but I really can't see into the plan. Can you zoom in? Because I have a couple of questions.
Um,
Well, I can't see any what the varieties are. I'm trying to, I, I, I just want to sort of, if you could zoom into the plan a bit more, I, I thought I could do it on my machine, but, I'm, I'm gathering that the slope with the conservation mix is a three to one slope. Oh, that's much better. Thank you. If you could go to, yeah, so that's a three to one slope and then the, the sediment, that's just stone. There's no infiltration species in that detention basin?
There, um, they asked us to plant some shrubs around the outside of it, uh, but this is stone in the middle here.
Okay, and the bait on the bottom and then the side slopes?
Bottom stone. So the, the side slopes will have that conservation mix with some added, um, service berries around here for, um,
And what varieties are you using? I just see the list real quick. Uh, London plane tree, wait for.
Those are just in the parking area.
Okay.
I, I figured.
Arbivides are screening on the left side? Is that my understanding?
Uh, here, these are.
Oh, to the back?
White firs down here.
Okay.
I think the arbivide around the dumpster area.
Yes, that's correct. They're here.
Okay, so the only screening that's happening along the dumpster area in the back?
With arbivides, yes, that's the screening there. And then we have, again, we have the larger trees going in along the property line. Because they're doing the same thing on the other side, the plan that was approved there.
Okay, so yeah, the spirea, the amalankia. Okay, so yeah, the spirea, the amalankier. Um, it would be nice in that area of the basin to maybe see some, um, oh my God, Ilex verticulata, winter berry for the birds.
Yeah, we can add some additional
You know, and a couple of those varieties. I mean, generally nine bark, I don't know if that's, is that, if that's really native. I know that's a plant that um he liked to use. I would almost consider replacing the nine bark with the winter berry and or um um, another like a clethra would be, would be good. But my my concern is mostly like in that right slope that's draining towards the wetlands, revegetating that slope with good native species and some mature trees, cause it's, you know, it's a, it's a steeper slope than is there and you're, there's, you know, that impact from the grading because the slope has to be so leveled out. Um, around the foundation, you've got what species? I can't really tell.
Um, so around here, we have um.
Red maples, pinoaks, those are good. Black-eyed susan is in the, is that like a berm on the left side?
And
Common juniper spire, that's all fine.
The notes here.
Uh, yeah, meaning some
That's where the nine bark is around the building.
Yeah, I I I think there's, I think clethra is a better substitution for the nine bark as a native.
Fair enough.
Um, and I think if you could have winter berry in and around the the drainage area. I'm not really that concerned about the foundation, cause it is the types of use it is, so just something that's evergreen and very low maintenance. Um, and you know, and then just really as many, what is the spacing on these um shade trees that you're putting? Are those, what species are you putting in on the right slope?
On the slope, we did um pinoaks and red maples, cause that's mostly what's out there now.
Okay, and then the London plane on the parking lot side or on the street side?
Right, in here, only because, you know, I I'm picturing trucks and trailers coming in and out of here and I was trying to keep something that would, didn't get so wide.
Alright, so the London plane trees are on the street side and then what's in the parking lot?
Uh, no, that's all of these here are that, the London plane, just the ones in the parking lot.
Those London planes in the parking, those islands are gonna get too big for that, in my opinion. You you might be better off going with a a smaller tree there. Even if it's like a, you know, a service berry or um, you know, something, just something smaller. That's like a medium-sized tree, cause the London plane tree is gonna get fifty to a hundred feet. I'd rather see those along the street, along Sycamore Pin oak in there. But I mean, yeah, I mean, I mean, just it's minor revisions, but generally I think you're you're on track. You know, I was just kind of concerned of how much the wetlands had pushed you to do, you know, a natural um approach to that drainage. So it sounds like there's a nice combination, so I'm I'm generally happy.
Marcy, do you wanna, uh, do you do you wanna?
Certainly happy, yeah, I'm certainly happy with the quantity proposed. I mean, I would make some, a few substitutions and I can work with them to make, you know, a few substitutions, which should really only be for the nine bark and and maybe what's in and around the um the basin, it might be good to have some of the verticulata in there. And then I would, and I would change out the London plane tree in the park, where the parking lot is. But, I mean, it's certainly, I think it's certainly sufficient enough to approve.
Yeah, I I'm just thinking how we phrase this, if if we vote to approve, you've mentioned three things and maybe
Three substitutions.
Right, so so just get those down for Evan to mention.
So replace the the nine bark with clethra. Substitute the London plain trees for a smaller um variety, which could be determined later. And then um introduce some Ilex verticulata around the drainage.
Winter berry.
So, yeah, the winter berry.
All right, I have, the applicant shall revise the landscape plan to include winter berry trees around the proposed drainage basin, uh, replace the
Winter berry shrubs.
Shrubs.
They're shrubs, they're not trees.
Right.
Substitute the London plain trees in the parking lot.
What was that, London?
Plain trees in the parking lot.
Substitute what?
You could sub, I would probably substitute with like a a honey locust, cause they're not impactful and they handle the asphalt really well. And they don't drop a lot of leaf litter on the parking lot, but I might, I have to check to see if it's on the late native list or not, that's where it gets tricky, but there's not that many and you know, there's enough other natives that I think were, were fine. And then I would just replace the nine bark with clethra.
So sub- substitute the parking lot, whatever that was, with a native tree?
I I'm just I would substitute with the honey locust.
Right, okay.
Which I'd have to verify that it's native, but I know it's, it's traditionally used in parking areas, cause it's doesn't create a lot of leaf litter, it handles the the pollution tolerant really well. I mean, if if, you know, given the other number of trees proposed and the shrubs, I think it's okay to have a few that are not native, it's not on the invasive list, so.
Okay.
And where is the nine bark?
It's mostly on the, yeah, along the Sycamore Way and Pin oak.
Do you have that, Evan?
And what are we replacing the nine bark with?
Clethra, C-L-E-T-H-R-A species. There's a couple of options you could use.
We're gonna add some winter berries um along the edge of the basin.
Yeah, I think we already
I do have service berries down here now.
Well, service berries is typically a tree, a multi-stemmed tree. The winter berry is more of a shrub, but those are both good native plants.
Are clethra species trees or shrubs?
Shrubs, and they're native.
All right, I have the applicant shall revise the landscape plan to include winter berry shrubs around the proposed drains basin, replace the proposed London plain trees uh adjacent to the parking lot with honey locusts and replace the nine bark adjacent to the street with clethra species shrubs.
Perfect.
Great, thanks, thanks, Marcy, Evan. Other commission members have any questions or comments? Hearing none, then let's open up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment?
I do not see anybody.
Okay. Any further comments, Mr. Preddy?
Uh, no, the only thing I I I would add is that, you know, the comment um under the conditions that uh, uh, number one, Evan added about the office area and, you know, um, changing. It it's it's fair because somebody may want two units and and maybe is instead of five-hundred square feet, seven-hundred-and-fifty square foot of an office and and two units, it still would meet the parking requirements, but it should be, I, you know, I guess at least looked at by staff, so.
Okay, so you're okay with the condition?
Yeah.
Can I, can I just clarify the parking? So the number of spaces is for the balance of office storage that they have now, or do you have a surplus that would give you some flex if it?
There's, there's, there's a few extra, yeah.
And do you have any areas that you could just have like initially grass that could become parking later, should it need?
Um, in the front, I, I I think on the Sycamore side, there is some area there.
Do you want to hold some in reserve, I guess, you know, or do you want to do?
We're only required to have thirty-two for, you know, what we had, we're instructed to calculate and we're showing thirty-seven, so.
Yeah, and I'm not interested in promoting more pavement, but I if if you can put the site plan up real quick, I would just sort of like get a sense of where the, how much of a shelf is off of the parking for like snow storage and where that, that three-to-one slope is starting again, if you don't mind. So, yeah, you've got room up top, like even in the back.
Yeah, and this is all flat area in here, too.
And the aisles are how wide? The aisles look really wide.
Uh, it is a little wider here because I I'm thinking about, you know, people turning to get into these garages with truck, you know, small trucks. Um, quite honestly, these type of buildings end up with mostly empty parking lots most of the time.
Yeah, no, I realize, but what size is the aisle?
Um, so over here, it's twenty-four, I think over here I have thirty-five. And then the parking space.
So, I mean, I mean, do you think we're really gonna be using those parking spaces? Could we propose, we propose them to not be paved?
Uh,
I don't wanna, I mean
Owner's not on with me, um, if we could leave that as an option, um, I I would, I would see if he's interested in that, but
And it looks like you could double load in the front if you absolutely needed to as a reserve.
Right.
Big base on the width and whatnot, no?
Um, I think we could use um part of this, yeah, you're right.
But you 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 have to build some of those, right? I mean, I mean, you couldn't lay them all in reserve, I don't think, right?
Yeah, you know, having the spaces constructed, you know, gives them a little more flexibility of what they could do in here. I would be inclined to put them in, but I don't have to go back and put them in later, that would be a bigger mess.
Yeah, well, I mean, and depending on the uses, there have to be things like, there could be three-five-fifties owned by the the bay owner. Just park there for their trucks that aren't, you know, people coming and going. Or their employees could be parking there and then whatnot, before they go out to do whatever construction they're doing. If it's that, if it ends up being those kinds of uses. But, you know, I'm satisfied that there's enough, how do I say it? Flexibility within the ungraded areas to find more parking in the future if need be. Based on the width of the roads as well, cause they could always neck those down too. Or double load in areas or something, so. So I'm happy with the plan.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none, then we'll close these items as public hearings, this will be something I think we can take up in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Preddy. Uh, next items is again number five and six on our agenda. This is also two applications for the same site. One project, two sixty-one East Main LLC care of Mark Jackson, applicant and owner. At two fifty-seven, two sixty-one East Main Street, special exception for uh, special exception modification, general business office. And also special exception for grading. Mr. Preddy, this is yours as well?
This is, um, Jim Preddy again, Crystal Engineering. Let's go to the screen. Uh, hopefully you can see the map. Uh, so this is the um house that was an office for uh Rich Florentine um for many years. Um, who's a part of the uh Fazano Appolito Lee Group, um, who actually, they moved the rest of their office to Bramford, so I believe he is with, in their office with them now. So this um was sold to Mark Jackson, who owns Coastal Light Consulting. They're actually, right now, not far from where the other building was down in Industrial Park. Um, so he would like to, you know, move his office into this existing office in the building. And then um construct a three-bay garage, cause they have some little boats and trailers for what they do. Um, and then would like to keep them inside and the materials they use. Um, so we have this um proposed garage of forty-five by eighty. Uh, and we're looping the driveway around, so he could basically pull in back into the garage and be done. Uh, we did provide a stormwater detention system for the increase in the uh, the previous surface here. Uh, um, we are adding sidewalks along the frontage here on on Route one. Um, uh, the little jog over here is what um the town engineer asked me to do that. Um, it lines up with the sidewalk at this end, but at the other end, um, uh, he asked me to get it back out into the right away, cause this is paved here. Um, so we did that for him. He's also reviewed the drainage and the grading along this uh edge specifically, because I think these people have had um some uh runoff problems. I think part of it is that there's some buildup along the fragmites in the back here, and when it floods, it doesn't run out as fast, but that's a whole different scenario. Uh, uh, we did provide a landscape plan, landscaping here is very minimal, though. Um, we, you know, we planted alongside the new garage um to, you know, satisfy the foundation planting. And we're adding street trees. Um, we did, there is landscaping in the front of the building now, but it's pretty old and um and um and 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 broken and stuff, so we took them out and we're gonna put in uh um, some uh rhododendron, uh, just cause I'm, uh, those azaleas in the front, just for a little color. Uh, these trees are are save, they're saving, there'll be just some minimal topsoil removed and then um um, just driveway paving here uh in between. Everything else is staying the same. The exist, this existing parking area and garage is staying. Um, the trees that are here in between the buildings are staying. Uh, it's just a pretty simple building. Um, vinyl siding, asphalt singles, it's gonna look more residential than commercial. Um, that's it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Evan, you want to review the staff report?
Uh, sure, this is a special exception modification, a special exception for grading and a CAM application. Uh, they are modifying the existing uh office space use at two sixty-one East Main Street and constructing a garage on the adjacent two fifty-seven East Main Street lot. Uh, that was formally approved for the uh taco trucks to be located there. Um, they plan to merge these two lots uh as part of this application. They meet the bulk requirements of the BR district. Um, this plan uh would also need a waiver of the landscape architect requirement. Um, as well as uh the front yard landscaping requirement is not met. Uh, the side and rear requirements are partially met. Um, and they did provide landscaping, planting beds around uh the perimeter of the building. Um, staff would like the commission to determine whether they'd be willing to waive full compliance uh with the front and side yard landscaping uh requirements uh through the commission finding excellence in landscape design. Uh, the applicant satisfies the off-street parking requirement. Um, they did submit a lighting plan uh to us and it is um uh meeting the standards from section six-point-seven. Uh, they also did provide an erosion control uh uh or a soil and and soil erosion and sediment control plan. Um, they meet the three-to-one slope requirement as well as they provided um a stockpile area on the, on the site plan or that erosion control plan. Um, this is a coastal site plan application. Uh, so the um commission would need to find that the measures proposed, to the extent that they are alternative from the Connecticut Deep two thousand and two guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control are acceptable. Um, the drainage and stormwater control was sent to the town engineer, circulated his comments to the commission. Uh, they did not have any concerns after some revisions that Mr. Preddy talked about. Um, based on the application materials, uh, it appears that the special exception criteria are generally satisfied. Uh, it also appears that the coastal site plan criteria are satisfied. Uh, staff recommends uh the following findings. One, that the commission finds that the special cr- special exception criteria are satisfied. Uh, two, the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. And three, subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, the commission finds that excellence uh in landscape de- design has been demonstrated. Uh, can, we recommend the following conditions, prior to the start of construction, the erosion control measure shall be installed. Um, and as may be directed by the Z E O town planner, um, necessary measures to control uh any more erosion uh or dust generated by fill brought into sight shall be implemented. Any lighting has to be compliant with section six-point-seven. Uh, this is a leftover condition from that previous approval, I thought I'd leave it in. Uh, the site plan may uh be modified as necessary to the satisfaction of the town planner to include E V charging stations uh and solar panels. Um, prior to the installation of any, or prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, uh, evidence of the legal merger of the two properties, subject of this application to the set, must be completed to the satisfaction uh of the town planner or is designated. And all previous conditions uh still apply, or all previous conditions shall remain in full force and effect as they may still apply.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Chuck, can you share? Thank you, Evan. Questions, comments from commission members? Marcy?
Um, I don't know what the street trees are for varieties, do, do.
On strong vapors, which is on their list.
Good, yeah, so I mean, I think that's a, a great addition. I'm not, you know. Updating the foundation plan at Florentine's front would be great, and other than that, I don't think that the planting plan needs to be complicated by a whole lot of other detail. So, I, I find it, I find this one fine.
Thank you, Marcy. Other questions, comments from any commission member? Hearing none, then let's open up to the public. If any member of the public wish to comment? Evan, you see anyone? Okay. Mr. Pretty, any further comments?
No, there are a couple of low-key ones today.
Any further comments from commission members or staff? Hearing none, then we'll close this matter, these matters as a public hearing, and this may be something we can take up a little bit. Thanks, Mr. Pretty.
Thank you.
Item number seven on our public hearing list is, um. Steven Rosenthal and Mary McCormick, applicants and owner for twenty-two School Street. It's a special exception for grading. And, uh, I understand, Evan, that where applicants requested that we open and continue this one to our next meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, uh, some additional changes have to be made to the site plan, uh, but hopefully we'll have them, uh, ready for the meeting on the sixth.
Okay, so if you're here on this one, this is, uh, number seven, twenty-two School Street. We're gonna open that and continue this to our meeting on February sixth. Again, that's a remote meeting, uh, just like this one, starting at seven P M, and, uh. So, if you're here on that, then come on back on our next meeting on February sixth. And that completes our public hearing items. So let's see if we can, uh, take care of a few of the public hearing items that we have heard. Evan, can you pull up your resolution for the Pine Oak Drive application? And Evan, why is that big square block on? It's better that we cannot. Yeah, we, we can't see, uh, we've got a couple of the findings, and then you can't see the top of the second page. Oh, there we have, conditions. Yeah, it's. Okay, what? Yeah, that's probably a better way to go, yeah. So the findings, um, uh, just that, um. Yeah, I, I think we are okay, uh, with the changes that Marcy recommended. Going ahead, finding we could waive the landscape architect in the, in the, uh, the finding of excellent landscape design. Just noting that, that seems to be the consensus and then. Um, and then, uh, you want to review the findings of, the, the, there are two findings in the conditions. Uh, just the compliance and then, right, so, so why don't we run through the conditions?
Uh, sure, the first condition was, uh, the limiting of the general office use, uh, so that there's five hundred square feet. Of, uh, the conventional office area, um, as shown on their floor plans. Um, condition two was erosion control measures shall be installed, uh, prior to the start of construction. Uh, condition three was any lighting has to be, oh no, I'm sorry. Uh, condition three is any additional, uh, erosion control measures or, um, measures to control dust shall be implemented. If deemed necessary by the zoning enforcement officer. Condition four was lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven. Uh, and condition five was the one I added, uh, during our earlier discussion, prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance. Or a certificate of occupancy, following shall be addressed to the satisfaction of, to the, of the town planner. Uh, the applicant shall revise the landscaping plan to include, uh, winter berry shrubs around the proposed drainage basin. Replace the proposed London plane trees adjacent to the parking. Lot with honey locusts. And replace the nine bark adjacent to the street with plethora species shrooms.
Great, Marcy, does that look okay? Okay.
Two thumbs up.
Okay, um, a- any other, uh, comments from commission members on the draft resolution? Hearing none, then is someone to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the proposed findings? And conditions that Evan has just explained to us, including the, the, uh, revision of, for condition five that, that he just read.
I'll make that motion as, as amended.
Motion to approve, uh, and adopt that staff, amended staff resolution, uh, by Marcy, is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Joe Bayuso?
Joe Bayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon is in favor.
And the chair is also in favor. Okay, so that, those applications are approved. That was again for both applications. Evan, you want to pull up the, uh, staff resolution for two fifty-seven, two sixty-one East Main Street? And again, uh, I think this one, uh. Um, it's, it includes a coastal site plan, or is it just those two conditions, Evan, or did it go further? Just making sure.
Um, it did go further with six total conditions and the three findings, uh, for the special. One for the special exception criteria, one for the coastal site plan. Um, or consistency with the, uh, Coastal Area Management Act, and three for the, uh, excellence in landscape design.
And then the conditions, again, I know you just reviewed them with us, but, uh.
Um, sure, uh, rose control measures shall be installed. Um, any additional measures, uh, deemed necessary by the zoning enforcement officer shall be installed. Uh, lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven. Uh, number four, the site plan, uh, may be modified. Um, for the installation of E V charging stations or solar panels to the satisfaction of the town planner. Uh, and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, evidence of the legal merger of the lot, uh, must be submitted to the town planner. Uh, and finally, all conditions of the previous approval shall remain in full force in fact as they still may apply.
Great, thanks, Evan. Any, uh, did, does any commission member have any comments or anything they want to discuss about this application? And, uh, I think, Marcy, I think you, I think you're okay with the landscaping. So if we're good with this, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the recommended findings and conditions? Uh, in the staff report that Evan has just explained to us?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Motion to approve and adopt the findings and conditions in the staff report by Marcy, is there a second?
Bayuso seconds.
Joe Bayuso seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Joe Bayuso?
Joe Bayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon Hutner is in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so those applications are approved. Thank you, Mr. Pretty. That brings us then going down our, the rest of the items on our agenda. Our agenda is a little bit out of order here, for some reason we have new business before old business, but. Under our agenda, there's three items of new business, they're all for the same address. Again, it's three interior lots, uh, at seventy-two Hilltop Drive and forty-three Totaka Road. And that's scheduled for a public hearing, I believe, at our next meeting. Is that correct, Evan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then the next item, we have two sets of minutes to review and approve. Um, first one is, was our December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Evan, did you look at those? Did you, had you seen any issues with any of those?
I read them, uh, they, they looked good, uh, the January section, the January second meeting was very short, so it wasn't too much to.
Okay, well, we'll start then with the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meetings. Does someone, anyone want to make a motion with respect to those minutes?
Don't move by Bayuso.
Joe Bayuso moves to approve the, uh, December twenty-four, nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four minutes, is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Joe Bayuso?
Joe in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon Hutner is in favor.
Chair is also in favor, so the December nineteenth minutes are approved. Someone make a motion again for our short meeting on, uh, January second, someone to make a motion with respect to those minutes.
Chadwick will make that motion.
Joe Chadwick makes a motion to approve the January second, twenty twenty-five minutes, is there a second?
Joe seconds.
Joe Bayuso, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Joe Bayuso?
Joe Bayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Darren?
Sharon is in favor.
And chair is also in favor. So those minutes are approved. Correspondence, anything, Evan?
Nope.
Okay, and then going to old business, uh, which really should have come before new business, um. Uh, the first item, I think, uh, all of these, uh, I think that first item will have a public hearing at our second February meeting, is that right? Uh, that's the, uh, fifteen, that's all probably here.
I believe so, uh, they have to go to the Z B A on January twenty-first, uh, so depending on the outcome of that application, we'll set the public here.
Okay, and then item number two, um, and with that, needs to be scheduled, I guess, uh, forty-five Seaview Avenue.
Uh, that actually is ready to go tonight, uh, circulated as a report, uh, to everybody, um.
Okay, let's, let's.
The architect Vivian is here to present.
Hi, my name is Vivian Dittisheim, and, um, let me share my screen with you. Um, this project, we actually had presented before. And basically, what we had was, we are trying to raise a building, uh. Residential building, a one-family structure in forty-five Seaview Avenue. And we had gone in front of Z B A and gotten a, uh. We've gotten, um, a variance for, uh, come, the coverage. That was increased from to twenty-nine percent, which we have kept the same in this, in this scheme. But basically, what we're trying to do, we were, the existing building is this outline here. Which was partially in a V E zone and partially in an A E zone. And we had gotten this approved to just raise it where it is. But then we, um, just with discussions in building and builders and everything, it seemed much. More advantageous for us to try and move the same building, but move it back behind the V E zone. We have also verified with the town engineer that behind the V E zone is just a regular A E zone. Which has, um, less stringent requirements than the V E zone FEMA requirements. And we were able to move the building back behind the V E zone, which is this line here. And we have been able to fit it within the required setbacks. So now we are here just for, um, another, uh, coastal management review. To, we have, we have kept the silt fence, we have kept the hay bales, we've kept all the best management the same. We've actually moved the building back, nothing else has changed. So we're just trying to get this approved in this new, uh, more favorable location. We will, under these circumstances, we won't have to put, uh, up those breakaway walls, which can be hazardous as well. So, that is basically the project. It had been approved, uh, before with the, with raising the building just in the same location. Further, uh, closer to the road, and now we're just taking the same building, fitting it within the building envelope. And moving it back behind the V E zone line.
Thank you, uh, I appreciate the presentation. And do you have anything?
Show us the architecture, do you have anything other than the site plan?
Um, yeah, I can show you, uh, I, I, I did, uh, we just, uh, pro- proposed this, I can show you. Um, I'll have to reshare the screen and, uh, get the drawings up. Let me see, how do I do that? Um.
While you're looking for them, maybe Evan, you can start reviewing your staff report.
Uh, sure, I actually found the elevations, uh, submitted for the Z B A applications, I can bring those up as well.
Yeah, those are similar, but the building is actually going to be less high, so I just, yeah, I wasn't.
I realize it changes with the construction to some extent, I just wanted to get a sense of the general size of it, because it seems like it's fitting within the setbacks.
Oh, yeah, it is this, this is the existing building, and we're basically just raising it up. Um, to, instead of now, um, to elevation sixteen, we only have to bring it to elevation thirteen to. We'll raise it up a little higher, but, um. That's the main existing cottage style house, it's a small house.
What's the main, um, elevation now? The ground elevation?
That's what you're seeing on the screen now is the existing elevation. These are, oh, the elevation.
Okay, and then you gotta bring it up to. So you need to bring it up ten feet?
We're gonna basically bringing it up to elevation, uh, because it's. Thirteen, but we're actually gonna bring it up a little higher, because. We're gonna bring it up, because this piece here is, um, an existing porch that is about eight inches lower. So we need to bring the building up above the FEMA elevation thirteen. But we also need to have some duct work done, so we need to have the duct work above elevation thirteen. So basically, we're raising the first floor that right now, um. Is at elevation ten, we're raising it up to elevation sixteen, fifteen. So from grade, we're basically raising the building from elevation six to about nine feet higher.
So are there, is that all contained within the building envelope?
Yeah, that's all within the building envelope.
And then there's no use under that, you're not trying, is there any use for?
No, we're going to, we are not allowed to use it except for storage and garage.
And will there be a garage there? Do you have any of the final elevations or just the existing?
Um, I have the, oh, here.
Okay.
If you go up.
Yep.
And we're at, we're adding a, um, because the couple is elderly, we're adding a A D A. Um, enclosed lift.
Nice, okay.
So basically, this is the ground floor, this was the previous elevation sixteen, we're actually gonna be lower now.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, because we don't have to go up this high.
Is there gonna be breakaway panels, or they're gonna be, like, are you gonna see through, or is it gonna be?
Another reason we want to move to, uh, we want to move to the A E zone. Because we won't have to have breakaway panels, which I think is much better.
Right, so that'll be enclosed, though, that won't be like.
Yeah, it will, it'll all be enclosed.
Nice.
And it's just, we'll have to have the flood, uh, vents, but, yeah, all this is, the, the upper part is all the same. It's just really gonna be lower, which we would like to do because. it's more practical and also less imposing. And we're moving it back.
Neighborhood, yeah, well, it seems, it'll keep the existing flavor of the neighborhood even though it's higher, which is nice.
Yeah, exactly. And we're moving it back. We're giving everybody a little more breathing space. We're giving right now, the, the building is actually eight inches away from, from the property line. And now we're moving it back to the required uh, property setbacks, so it gives everybody more breathing room.
Nice. So the bulk was for floor area?
The, um, the variance was for, for, for floor air, for the coverage, basically. We have because on the property, there's also a garage. And um, we just are a little over the coverage. The allowed coverage.
It seems like you're not really increasing the footprint all that much, though.
No, what we are, we are just adding because we do have to add, um, the we are just adding the ADA elevator and the exterior stair is bigger because we have to go up higher. So, yeah, you could, you can see the existing garages here. And then basically, the outline, the deck was there before, so we're keeping the deck the same. It's basically just adding this elevator and the exterior stair.
That's minimal.
And it gets us to that a point twenty-nine. Uh, that twenty-nine percent inc- um, coverage instead of, I think it was allowed as twenty-six or whatever it was.
Well, that probably.
It's a small lot, but. Yeah, yeah, the, the lot predates the zoning. So the building was there predate, pre-ninety, it was built in nineteen fifty-something. Where, I have it here on the zoning. Um, if you can, let me see.
Well, it looks like you're making improvements.
Yeah, we're really making improvements. Oh, yeah, here you go, um. The building was built in nineteen-ten, preceding the zoning regulations from nineteen fifty-six. There we go. And so, yeah, the existing is not, if the existing building was already non-conforming and we're just in we have to increase it a little bit. But, I mean, we are at this point making it more conforming than it had been before.
Right, right.
And we are not changing the building at all. The client wants to keep it the same.
Yeah, no, that was helpful. Thank you for pulling up those elevations.
Thank you, Evan.
No problem.
So, this is, um yeah, this is what we're here for.
But, thank you. Evan, do you want to review your staff report?
Uh, sure, uh, like, um, she just described, uh, they're relocating, uh, the existing home to be um out of that flood zone. Sorry, I'm just gonna bring up the site plan for everybody. Uh, they meet the bulk requirements of the R one district, uh, however, they did receive a variance, uh, for lot coverage uh, from the zoning board of appeals to go up to twenty-nine percent. Um, they meet the off-street parking requirements. Uh, a condition has been added that any lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven. Uh, they are proposing, uh, silt fencing around, um, the app, the proposed activity as well as a site, as, as well as a stockpile. Um, the commission would need to find, because this is a coastal site plan application uh, that the measures proposed to the extent that they are alternative from the deep two thousand and two guidelines for soil and erosion sediment control are acceptable. Uh, they satisfy the coastal site plan requirements of section nine point seven. Uh, staff recommends the following findings and conditions. Uh, one, that the coastal site, the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. And the, and two conditions prior to start prior to the issuance of a building permit, following shall be at the satisfaction of zoning enforcement officer, erosion control measures shall be installed. Um, and any additional measures deemed to be necessary by the zoning enforcement officer. And any lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven.
Chuck Kean is here. Thank you, Evan. Questions or comments from commission members? Uh, if no one has any questions or comments, uh, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the finding and two conditions?
Uh, I'll make that motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve, uh, by Marcy. Is there a second?
Sharon Hutner will second.
Second by Sharon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy Palusi?
Marcy's in favor.
Karen?
Sharon Hutner is in favor.
And the chair is also in favor. So the application's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thanks.
And then that was, I think that's, uh, our old, that was number two of old business and number three. We have, uh, that's Thomas Briggs, applicant owner, special exception, personal services, personal trainer. Uh, that we need to schedule a public hearing on that item. So I think that will probably be in our February sixth meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's it for old business. Other business, what do you have for us, uh?
Um, I do have, we received an application for modification to the lighting at the Branford Yacht Club. Uh, we had received complaints and issued violations, uh, for some lighting that was installed, uh, without approvals. Um, they have since, uh, um submitted a, a site plan modification application, uh, along with the photometric plan. Um, I thought it was, um, minor enough, uh, that it could be done uh, or reviewed by myself, uh, for this approval, uh, that is allowed uh, in section nine point six B five. Uh, that's, uh, anything deemed minor, um, can be approved by myself. I just have to, uh uh, bring it to you guys, um, uh just to let you guys know.
Any questions from anyone? It sounds like it's just an existing pole that are modifying the intensity of the lighting on it or something, or something like that.
Uh, yeah, exactly. Uh, one, one large pole in the parking lot with, uh, some powerful lights shining over the waterways. Um, they're looking to, uh, bring those back into compliance.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I would, I would suggest, uh, to be more mindful of, of making these lights, uh that they're gonna be a lot brighter or whatever to make sure they're, they're, they're pointing down because there, that's probably not the only light that's there that's really doing, you, you really see it a lot on a when the, it tends to be a little more foggy and it carries a little bit more. There's some lights there that are really bright. It's not just there, but generally speaking, these new lights are coming out, these L E D lights, they're they're very bright and and they're, they're great, but they got, they need to be pointed down a little more because they do, uh stand out more than, uh, they, than the old ones were. So just, I think we have to be more mindful of how they, they set them. Set them more, more downward, like they're, like they're supposed to be.
Thanks, Joe. I think, don't I reg say that? Or I, I thought they did.
Uh, yeah, full cutoff and, uh, light trespass, uh, two two standards that they'll have to be compliant with, um. Uh, I've gone back and forth a few times with the lighting technician that planned or that created the plan, uh, so hopefully, everything's in order and, and we'll put a stop to that.
Thanks, Evan. A- any other business you have for us under your planners report?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, anyone else have anything? If not, then, uh, I guess, uh, we're open to a, for a motion to adjourn.
Sharon Hutner moves to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Sharon. Is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second by Marcy. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon Hutner is in favor.
And chair is also fair. So we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.